People from all over Canada and people from all sorts of different places and that makes it will make a great place to visit and a great place to live. So with that, we will begin, uh, most of the course, the adoption of the agenda on Wednesday, declaration of a conflict of interest with any agenda items. Nothing, and we will go straight to delegations, presentations and petitions. And Jesse's here for the monthly RCMP report. Welcome, Jesse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. So obviously, um, you know, I've said this before, Saudi Arabia is not immune to some of the violence we've seen in the southern part of our territory. Um, as sort of an example on, on, on April eleventh, when we seize that handgun. And a big thank you to the community. Cause lots of community members called in that suspicious vehicle. And that's what led us to ultimately seizing that handgun and arresting that individual. Two suspects are still outstanding that we had to identify, but we're still trying to identify those individuals. And like you, sadly, are getting used to too. We had our emergency response team backup, our great partners from Yellow Life. That was our police dog services and our drone and, and our SWAT team members, they come up and helped us execute a warrant. April twenty seventh in a permanent building. It's where we see some drugs and some cash. And again, another individual that's not originally from the New Vic. So, you know, we'll keep fighting that. We'll keep doing what we can. Uh, you know, there's obviously challenges with while these individuals get caught, get released again. Uh, but we'll keep doing what we can, keep doing what we can do. And, um, again, big thanks to the community and that's why it's important for community members not to take things in their own hands. You know, these, these individuals don't play by any set of rules. Um, and, and often can resort to violence. So, um, again, just good work by the detachment members, the community for calling in. I'd also like to highlight that tomorrow, around an open house at the detachment, thank you for the town for sending that information out on the internet. Uh, just a chance for anybody, anybody in the community to stop by, have a coffee, chat with me, chat with some of the members, apparently Luke or or anybody. So we kind of poke around the detachment and show everyone that we're citizens and residents of the Nubik too. So, um, thank you very much for that. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Jesse. Questions from council? Deputy Mayor Barrett?
Thank you. Again, great work. Um, I just noticed a section here, maybe my memory just failed me, but you have one here under the title of prolific offenders and talking about several compliance checks. Is that something new you guys are starting to do now? Has it all been practice?
No, it's been, it's been always a practice. I think we're just trying to highlight it more. So thanks for asking that. And that's, uh, those are individuals who were either released on conditions prior to their trial or have been sentenced to probation under non-conditions. So, you know, we, we keep up those compliance checks because oftentimes those individuals can be repeat offenders. Um, so we just make sure that they're complying with their conditions and they know we're looking at them and, and hopefully that makes them, uh, for lack of a better term, behave a bit, a bit better.
Great. Thank you. Um, yeah, it was just good to see because I think sometimes there can falsely be a sense that RCMP doesn't really do much to keep on top of some of these individuals who do have that, uh, have been repeat offenders. So it's nice to see that highlighted and hopefully that can be communicated to the broader community as well. You guys are doing the job and keeping tabs on people who need to have tabs kept on them.
I know it can be frustrating for people, but like, like I've always said, I'll continue to say, you know, call in, report crime. You know, it doesn't mean that we're always going to solve that one particular call or, or, or make everybody happy, but, uh, like we've seen time and time again, since I've been here, this council's seen it. When people call in and report crime, we generally have pretty good results. Uh, might not be immediate, but eventually we will. So we can't do it alone. Obviously we have to. Uh, our communities are our biggest, our biggest state.
Thanks, Jesse. Question on the, before you're getting on the drug offenses. Are they driving up the dumpster or do you think they're flying in?
Uh, you know, anecdotally, I would say both. Okay. I, I, at least since I've been here in the two years, I've seen both. Uh, that used by both airlines that come here and, and some do drive in.
Any other questions from council? Councilwoman?
Is there ever going to be a security out of White Horse and Yawn Knife that for the flying purposes coming into?
Ask those same questions. Uh, counselor and, and that is a, a different federal government department that obviously takes care of the airport security. Um, I even asked, they had a like a presentation on the new airport that, that they're building here. And I asked them about that and I said, no, there's no including security in that. It's something that does frequently come up. And I think those discussions, we have a new federal government that's been elected and that might be some discussions that you could have with our new MP.
There's also a statement made out of yellow knife. Not arresting all drug dealers is not the answer. And I think I'm coming for this. I strongly disagree up in the north so small. Uh, and I think it needs all approaches, not just the one where I can remember made a statement. But it's, uh, very sad that you're testing.
Yeah. I agree with you. I think it's a, it's a team approach, like anything else. We have our part. We are the people or we're the agency. We should be the ones disrupting as much as we can. That, um, supply part, obviously is the demand part. There are ways to help individuals who are struggling with drug substance, uh, use. But I, I one hundred percent agree with you that we need to, we need to keep the, keep the pressure on, keep enforcing the law. Cause that's what our job is, is enforcing law.
I appreciate all your efforts. I've never seen, uh, in my whole life living here, I've never seen so much, uh, well, it's aggressive. We want to have them aggressive. We appreciate that energy. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Officer McDonald? Yeah. Thanks, Jesse. Um, you mentioned the vigilante justice and obviously a little bit of this movement going on across Canada and some of the communities. Um, not that they've written the blessing, some quotes, and I don't know what the truth is or how it's even done that. Norman Wells, they're moving members over the community. Um, escorting by police and getting them on airplanes. How, how is that being done lately? And, and is that an option?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I can't, I won't speak, I won't speak to Norman Wells. But, you know, I think one of the things that, you know, some of the instances in this report should highlight to everybody is again, that these individuals don't play, play by any set of rules. And often they can have access to weapons. Like that, like the handgun we seized in early part of April. So the best recourse is to call the police for suspicious people. Um, and I, I can't comment exactly on what happened to Norman Wells. But geez, I sure like our approach too, because, uh, although we have caught a couple of repeat offenders uh, that were released on bail, we sent them right back. So we'll continue to do that. And I, I will, I will say that the Northwest Territories, um, you know, legal system does, does give, uh, pretty good sentences to people convicted of drug trafficking, especially in some of our smaller communities. So they take it seriously.
Any further questions for Jesse? Anything there, Councilman Mio? Just the comments of the amazing technology that we have now where have that scruffy looking guy calling in all the way from his camp.
Oh, jealous.
Which is what? Sixty, seventy, well, probably almost a hundred. Well, it was a close lie. It's probably a hundred kilometers away from the New Vic, but.
Pretty far from Razor from the rivers.
We might need to go do a wellness check.
I might stay there for a week. Thanks again, Jesse, and thanks to all the members for all the great work we do, they do. And, um, I have to admit, I, I think probably in, well, certainly in the last year, uh, the RCMP presence at the schools, at the rec complex. You know, they've, they've just been out and about a lot more. And I think that's probably coming from some of your leadership and, you know, some of the direction and creating, creating the relationships. And yeah, it's great to see and look forward to the open house tomorrow.
Thank you. And it's, it's all on the members. And I have a final saying that you gotta make the cut to get posted to a Nubik. And it's a high bar that the constables and corporals have set here. And I just try to, I try to meet up their standards. So thank you very much, Jesse.
And any errors or missions concerned with the minutes from the April seventh, maybe? You don't have a chest or a shoulder? Any corrections needed? Okay, motion? Action items list here. Any questions on any of the action items? Send me anything you wanna follow on.
A update from our legal counsel with regard to the TPC intervention. Phase one is almost complete with only the reply argument remaining uh, to be filed on Tuesday, and he anticipates for decision within ninety days thereafter. So we will just wait until that's applied and see where it is from there. So he'll keep us updated.
Any other questions on any of the other action items? Deputy Mayor Barrett?
I remember one, our thing's looking for securing funding for Nubik Works.
Well, that, uh, there's all sorts of applications out there and some positive response. The one group has indicated that they would, very much, we haven't got the official note yet. Very much indicated that they would fund the manager's position for four years. And there's been other ECE applications for the foreman and for three or four participants. We should be hearing back from them because they cut their budget now for a while. Um, I think the community corp is looking at a proposal, um, for funding that's not directly tied to staff, but for other needs that they'll have.
The Alison Carpenter?
Which?
The women's, Alyssa Carpenter?
That's the four years.
The four years?
Four years for the manager. Uh, there's a couple of other applications in, but I, I can't recall, but we with the directors and then update directly from Patricia. So she should have some of that. Oh, the other thing they recently got money for was we hold a training session to train some volunteers and some potential employees on, how is that?
Yeah, you know, looking good. Just making sure about the
It's, it's
securing of the funds.
Yeah, it's way better that it looked, uh, in large. I'll say that much.
Yeah.
Um, also, I, I think there was some funding that, um, which a tribal council was looking at. They hadn't used the fund for a while, but thought it would apply because it also is kind of a health and wellness, uh, initiative. So hopefully that also turns out, um, even if it's funding for one participant, it's just adds to the, adds the pieces together. So. Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions on any of the other action items? All right. We don't have any new business, um, no bylaws, no departmental updates that'll come, um, next meeting. Information items, there are three information items that, uh, were in your, well, one is in your package and then the, um, the other two, we'll just get updates on those. So I haven't responded to this because we hadn't discussed it. So this is, um, I guess coming from the new owners of the liquor store wanting to increase their hours. And then the minister is asking for our comments, concerns on the proposed, uh, hour change. Discussion? Everyone's seen this in the package. Councilor Merrill?
A bit puzzled. Copy this to the regional superintendent for MACA of the South Slave Region, but not our region. Is there a reason for that? Or just an error?
Yeah, I don't, um, have no idea why they would have done that. Probably, I'm guessing a clerical error, uh, between the first page and the second page.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll, we'll, um,
Having noted that, I will send it off to our
Yeah, we'll, we'll contact them. They may have got it, but maybe just the, uh, somebody was doing a bad cut in pace. Deputy Mayor Barrett?
Yeah, I guess just for the sake of discussion, it'd be interesting to hear what the counselors think, um. At first rate, I was kind of disinclined to think about offering open up Sundays because I thought we have pretty good hours already, but at the same point in time, seems to be focused on the summer period, which will be largely tourist season, which you may have people coming in all different days of the week, including Sunday, maybe interested in having a beer after making it off the dumpster. Um, I don't really know what to think of this in some regards. The, the one thing I think I would say is if anything, I would suggest they amend their suggested hours of opening to maybe open at two rather than twelve. Just Sunday church service and everything else. It would be just wrapping up. I think that would be, um, maybe acknowledgement to the importance of that for a lot of people in the community. But, um, I don't say, I wouldn't mind to hear a bit more public feedback on this suggestion before we as a council would render a decision, but, um, yeah, like I said, I first thought I didn't really think it was needed, but then I thought, well, maybe it's not necessarily a horrible idea in some ways, but it's not, wouldn't be the end of the world. But I don't know how much the local community would necessarily access that, but you may have people coming in from out of town, which again brings in some of that outside money into the community, which was always helpful. Um, but yeah, we interested to hear what others think.
Any other comments from Counselor, I see the, oh, sorry, uh, Counselor Gillis?
Um, I think it will curb bootlegging. Cause liquor store will be open on Sunday. So what's chance to bootleg if liquor store is open every day? And then, I mean, I think they just wanna make money like any business. And restricting them to a day off or the other ones that probably I'm assuming the people that ran it before just wanted the day off, a day of rest. These people don't really like to work every day. That's my opinion.
Yeah, Pete, can you hear me? Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, I mean, I'm not against it. Um, I think, would it be, would it be something to think about? Maybe doing summertime hours? Like have it like a seasonal thing to be open on those days? Um, I mean, that's something to look at, but at the same time, you know, Melinda's right. I mean, these guys are just looking at making a living if they want to work seven days a week. I, I mean, I'm not opposed to that either. Um, I know we do have issues, like some of the social issues that are in the back of everyone's minds, but I mean, you know, I'm certainly not opposed to having it like that. Something seasonal to suit the tourist season, maybe to start with. I don't know, but that's just my two cents.
Your Counselor Mio?
It is, it is a seasonal request. It's only June one to September thirty. Which matches what the trapper asked for.
Yeah.
Sorry, uh, Counselor Mio, I was just saying that the request is seasonal. It's only for June first to September thirtieth. So it is kind of that summer, early fall season and it kind of matches what the trapper had requested earlier, which at that time I'd supported as well, which made me kind of think about it a bit more. Um, and think it's not necessarily a bad thing, but if anything, I might suggest us amending the hours a little bit as a consideration.
Okay. Yeah. No, if that's a seasonal thing, then I'm all for that for sure.
Yeah, there. Counselor McDonald and Counselor Merrill?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I'm in agreement, which is for everybody. And, and I think that the, I don't know if it's our responsibility. I don't know if it'd make any difference with the, uh, as a social impact, whether it's open a little bit later or not. And I think that's what a lot of people think. If we open up the liquor store more, then it's gonna create more drinking. I, I don't think that's the case personally. I just think that the issues are there and the hours of the liquor store aren't gonna affect me that much. So, thanks, Michael.
Councilor Merrill?
Do you have any process for the public to give feedback? Has the public even heard about this? Cause I know when it was the trapper, we had a large crowd show on.
Yeah, I, I don't know what other process they're doing here. They don't, they don't say that. And I, I haven't heard it or seen anything else on that. Um, they wanted to, like they sent this to us. It's dated on the twenty ninth. And I think we got it. You know, on that day or the day after, but then they wanted a response by the ninth of May. So likely what we can do is contact them and say if, if people want any more time, uh, or ask them if there's any other consultation going on, because it looking at the CC list, they certainly haven't contacted anybody else within the community.
Yeah.
So. Counselor Barrett?
You know, looking at this from an economics perspective, I don't think that it's gonna have a, a significant economic impact in any way. You know, looking at it from a community perspective, I'm not sure necessarily how this could, could serve our community in a, in a, in any significant way either. Um, I agree that it's probably just a business that's looking to open for more hours and make more money. Um, like other counselors around the room, I'd be interested to know what community members think about this because there, there may be some opinions or perspectives that we might want to consider before submitting if we do choose to submit. Um, I'm not, I'm not surprised that given the tourist population will be coming through at that time, but I'm just not certain, I'm not convinced that this is something that would be worthwhile to, to support and make the change in our community.
And maybe what we can do for, for anyone who wants to reach out to any community members. We discussed it tonight. We've got two days before we come back on Wednesday evening. And then, um, it, it'll be on the agenda again. And then if anybody has any further comments, uh, then we can have a discussion and then we can, we can have a motion from council on how they want me to respond as far as the letter back to the minister. Okay? Okay. Thanks. Eleven two, community verification.
This is an update, uh, with regard to the efforts. We have the communication in place. We have looked at, um, extending it to start a little bit later. Uh, given the melt in the mud and all of that type of thing. So this is actually going to be brought to the committee meeting tomorrow to discuss, finalize the dates and should be, we don't need a council decision necessarily for the residential, um, pickup or any of those other activities. That's part of a policy. So this is more of an FYI that it will be coming forward by, I believe the community pickup, or sorry, the community cleanup is going to start June second with the large item pickups the week after. So this is more of a heads up. It's coming.
Question, comments from Council on that area? Okay, item number, Counselor Gillis?
Does this include like the zoning and cleaning in the zones?
Yes.
Okay. And then if, I know some areas there aren't like full zones taken. If those aren't zones aren't taken, can any of the works take the ones that are not taken so that that's money going to them?
Yes, we actually had that discussion in the, the planning meeting, uh, specifically uh, was identified that Nubik Works could, uh, and we can take a look at it because there's a certain pot of money that is assigned to each of those zones. So we could look at Nubik Works and working it into an honorarium or a stipend for whoever through Nubik Works performs the, the litter pickup and that type of thing. So we have discussed it and Patricia is more than willing to facilitate that as well. So. Yep, too. Thank you.
Any further questions, comments on this? There. Eleven three, emergency management update.
Uh, Director Larmen is ill this week and he will provide an update at the next set of council meetings. He's got a few apps and a few, um, demonstrations he'd like to share with you. So I think it's best that he be here for that.
Is that also including the town emergency plan? Or when are we seeing that at council?
Yes. So he will be, uh, discussing that as well.
Okay. Yeah, be good to get that discussed and approved or whatever we need before we slide into horse buyer season. Okay. Any questions, comments on that? No. Going to council concerns. Any concerns? Counselor Gillis?
Just a topic one today. Um, is the town done their back billing?
Their what?
The back billing with regard to, there was an issue with, uh, some of the water bills.
Oh, that's what you're asking. Sorry, billing, not billing.
Like their twenty twenty three?
Yeah. So we are in the process. We have our accounts receivable going back through the files to make sure that everything is accurate. We're going to be meeting with the people who've identified that they have concerns with it. We're going to be meeting and going through that. Uh, Director Oliasi, is there anything else to add to that?
Yeah, just, uh, just to confirm that. Yeah, this, this stuff, I've told us to look at it again. Um, yes, it was missed from twenty twenty three and uh, what? We're just trying to catch up and ensure that this service were rendered and were missed by, you know, just by people involved then. And we're seeing these amounts showing up when we make the analysis and we think that we should inform the businesses that, um, enjoy the service. So we're, we, we're trying, we, we we have gone through it once before we send it out, but because of what we're hearing, well, okay, let's, let's go through it once, once more and reconfirm. What if it goes up close to accurate?
So we are doing an analysis. We will be meeting with the people who've identified the concerns and review their usage at the time. Part of the issue was there is a reader and then during a time in twenty twenty three, it was just noted in the logbook. And that wasn't transitioned into the software. So that's where the issue is. Where she identified them.
Okay, perfect. But I'm just like, as long as we do it and get it over with and then be done and don't, don't come back to go back for twenty twenty two again, because I don't want to spend twenty twenty five money for twenty twenty two anymore. So once we're done, let's make sure we're done. And then we don't look like, you know, it's a cash cow. And I get that the service was rendered. I do get that, but you know, it's not something I pay attention to. So I'm getting hit with these bills in this year for two years ago. Kind of sucks. So let's just make sure we get it done and then it's done. Thank you.
And we also want to make sure it's done properly. So we're
Sure. So we don't have to do it again.
Yeah, we're not willing to meet with anybody to have that discussion to make sure everything is good and we can move forward. Yeah. All right. Uh, any, oh, another counselor concern? Counselor Raymond?
One, one more on that subject. You calibrate these things because it's, uh, obviously a big problem.
It's been an issue that's been identified. That's the reason why we just spent seven thousand dollars on the radios and receivers that are going to get installed, not only for residential, but also for the uh, water point to make sure that this doesn't happen. This is one of those legacy things that have carried over that we are trying to get a handle on moving forward, that it's accurate and
So once you get a hold of it, how long, how many times are you going to calibrate?
Daniel, you have a comment on that?
Um, so we have to work with, um, the media providers, I guess, to, to figure out what the requirements are. But just like, um, the SA mentioned, it's seven hundred thousand, about seven thousand, like you said, but the project, I mean, the project is about seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and we're having, we're going to a new, Italian new system. So we wouldn't have to, she wouldn't have to drive around anymore. We're having two way radios. They're gonna install it's right here in front of the fire fire hall. Um, and she should be able to take the ratings right from her computer. Uh, so that, that project, we already have delivery of all the radios. We have delivery of a bunch of the meters, but not all of them yet. Um, and they should be coming in this summer to do the installation in terms of the actual network system and all that stuff. And then, uh, hopefully all of these issues will be a thing of the past. And we'll work with them to figure out when those calibration needs to be done. And if our, if our team can actually be trained to do those calibration, or do we have to bring somebody in, we'll have to work all that out. But but we are working on a new system and hopefully that's just commence this summer.
So currently we've identified what the issue is and manual read. So if there's something off, then the utilador crew would have to go out and do a manual read. So she's flagging those that are of concern rather than Rather than just estimates, and that's part of the problem is estimates were being done. Now, that's particularly with the residential side, uh as well as commercial side, the water treatment. The water. The bulk water transfer point uh is also included in reviewing the entire system, so.
But, but do we ever? Measure out, let's say, a thousand liters? And determine that our meters are correctly, or we're measuring that correctly, like, do we know? That the meters are actually calibrated properly to be able to measure. And report on what they're doing, and then, then there's the whole back thing where reports back to us. But are people actually getting, if they get a thousand liters, are they getting a thousand liters? We confirm that.
Uh, I'll have to look into that, but uh the actual reading of the meters and. All that detail is not actually done by my departments, done by their country civil, municipality, but we support them. Um, and trying to make sure they get the accurate readings, and like she said, they go in and do fiscal reads when we have, when. The staff mentions those issues, so we can look into that and confirm that we're actually getting accurate readings even from the existing meters.
I know that we read the, read what the meter says.
Yeah.
But is the meter actually reading the amount of water going out into the tank correctly? Which, how would we know?
Resident, are you talking residential now, are you talking about who produced?
The, the water point, where people are getting bulk water.
Yeah.
So if someone comes and gets a thousand or ten thousand.
Fuel station.
Do they actually get a thousand liters? Like, is the meter reading it correctly when it goes through the meter?
We'll have to look into that, yeah, and uh. But I believe if it was installed, then it's probably, I still working properly. It would be good, but I'll check, I'll ask the guys.
It, like at the gas pump, when you go to the gas pump, it says, this was certified at this date.
Mm-hmm.
So do our meters actually? Get certified, or does someone check that they're giving the amount?
Yeah, I get the question now. I'll give you an answer before Wednesday.
Yeah, thanks, Daniel.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other council concerns? Yeah, Councilor McDonald?
Um, that just. Reminded me on the community duplication, but I've had um. Many members approaching and asking, is anything we can do or are doing about? Kind of the length of the yard, people, people stop buying. Garbage and stuff all throughout the yards, throughout the, the community, or do we have the ability to? We have bylaws, or are we able to uh? To deal with those kind of things?
Yeah, we, you mean, in, on their private property, yes, yes, so we've got a um.
Unsightly and derelict properties.
Yeah. So we do have an unsited. Property bylaw. And we have, I know in the past, gone to some of the residents and said, you know. Based on the bylaw, you need to clean up a bit, and I think that's probably. Something else that would be good to do during our cleanup, you know. And, you know, definitely was the education before and, and the soft approach before we start handing out any tickets, but. Can probably match a few people that um would definitely clean up.
Yeah, I think you're on, on the education side, if you somehow brought that.
Yeah.
To the forefront, that hey, look at this.
Yeah.
Make our community a better looking place, uh, and how they decided your yard and.
Yeah, no, if you've got, you know, twenty derelict cars. You know, turned over in your yard, or whatever, maybe those could be cleaned up.
And so, and one other, one other thing we, we, I think we talked about, or we did talk about, well, well, back was the um. Um, the dumping, free dumping, and is it made? Um, but we were looking at, or you were mentioning that, maybe you were gonna do away with the free commercial dumping?
I think that's on the agenda for tomorrow, infrastructure meeting, on a quick meeting. Yeah, for a discussion. Any further council concerns? Oh, Councilor, Councilor Ray?
On the calibration of water, it's a simple procedure, if we take a loop cube. At the water point, fill the water point with one cube. It either goes over, goes under, and that'll answer our questions on this calibration of this big pump.
Yeah.
It's a simple procedure.
Yeah.
But I've never seen it done before, so there's gonna be a lot of questions.
I've never seen it done at our water. Yeah, so. Be something good to do, just to make sure.
Everybody's again, you might be getting more than, it might not be right.
Yeah. Okay, any further causal concerns? You're good, Councilor O'Neal, no concerns out, at the lake? All right, we, I need, next, the last thing on the agenda is uh in camera items. Just need a motion to go in camera, moved by Councilor Merrill, sent in by Councilor Gillis. All in favor? Great. Thanks for coming out.